Heavenly Father, we come before you as a board of commissioners asking for your guidance and direction. Please help us to be fair and equal across the board and asking for your consideration and guidance and of your morals in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, the morning welcome. Are there any additions or changes to be agenda?
So, the hospital call, let me know they need to reschedule. One of their presenters is sick, so we'll need to move theirs to the next meeting. And then I have a pre-authorization request from the Sheriff's Office. I can put it in the consent agenda or a dance that you can talk during public comment, whichever way you guys prefer.
I'm okay with putting in consent agenda or just...
It's, so I'll just read it real fast then. It's for handgun ammunition. It says bulk ordering, teach to the Lord, cost amount, they won't invoice, needs to be on credit card. And I'll pass it around for you guys to look at when it comes to the Constitution Act stuff.
I would like to add to old business, the discussion on handgun ballistics this year and also airport board definition discussion. Are there any other additions or changes to be made?
I'd like to add to old business, discuss the salary tiers and possible places that we can work on that.
Are there any other additions or changes?
I move to approve the agenda's amended.
I have a motion. Can I give a second?
I second that.
Have the motion been properly seconded? Is there any discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
You were, is there something you wanted to change?
No.
Okay. Alright. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything we want to pull? The motion will approve the consent agenda.
I would like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the preauthorization from the Sheriff's Department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To properly seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And on the mill levy, if you will sign the colored sheet on the front and then the front of the first page please.
Anyone that's not muted on the team's meeting, could you please mute? I think that would be you, Carrie.
Just like, yeah, the green one and then the first piece of stuff.
Oh.
Yeah. That's the big number instrument. On, on side one. That one actually very good. You gotta kind of give me...
There. Only when the handle on your nose.
Alright, we've been winding down here, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment?
You should be spraying my mag this week. I think Martin's gonna be down here with the light today.
What, are you spraying your mag or what?
No, I'll be like that.
Oh, the C mag, yeah, the C mag.
That was good. I've got guys knowing rates. I got an email from Rosenworks. We had a law tractor every year, we'll rate some, and we're gonna do it next year. If we did that one, I'd have to give you experience, but I keep, I was the same, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and get one for five, definitely. As far as goes now.
Zach, what's the rate on that truck?
It wasn't off the horsepower, though. It gets 25 cents per horsepower.
What are you...
Right now, it's 38.75 an hour. Sure for the same tractor, it'd be 77, 15.
Off the body tarp, is it releasing now or, you know?
In the long run, that's, I mean, yeah, if you make 12,000 a year in these tractors. You know, trying to get, makes more sense.
No, but that 12,000 to 24,000. Adds up pretty quick for a price. It's a good point, that how many hours are, are not equipped. By the time we're getting it for buying it, is it, does it need to be replaced or rebuilt?
True. Yeah, you know, we own one, we cut bridges. I think we're on 6,000 miles on that, so. And the ones that we laid started down with a brand new. Down a box underneath the ground, we had one of the loaders on the crusher, crusher crew back there, they were belly down trailers. They were pretty random, like damaging, just kind of waiting for the tanker to fix it. We had a truck in company, thanks to topsoil, we helped, we gravelled up their gravel bed. They did clean it up, it's deep enough, throw that out. Well, I suspect that they were, they cleaned your gates out, where they had them, because they were hauling from topsoil, we gravelled. They said it wasn't left for local, it's still, it's really mine out.
Yeah.
You know, I, we've been going to a few places. Can you unless I blow the trees? So also the like, there's, where we have a top of, down at the yard, that the assessor's office had. And Darren hooked it over, replaced shocks on it. It probably needs a battery, but everything that, it's probably usable if the department wants it. I'll try to do an action here. Yes, also, those of you guys that insured some other vehicles, how much of our equipment do you guys want insured? And some of the pickups, certain miles, does anyone pay insurance on them?
I'd, some of them, one, I would, I would just carry the liability that we're requiring, and I would replace the cost on that. Reductors would be more than the cost of the vehicle.
Sure. You know, we've been got some of those older loaders, we've got, I mean, we paid $5,000 to install them, like, you know. I don't think we need to price them for that, but to me, it's probably not worth paying a lot of insurance for any of those for them.
I would, I'd say your judgment on what, you know, if something happens to one. Usability versus what it's worth, you know, and I would, I'd trust your judgment on what I would do. You know that equipment better be doing.
If you could give me that list as soon as possible, what you've already taken off, we're in the middle of updating one.
How many vehicles are you talking to drop?
I would say probably two of those loaders. I guess we probably four pickups at least. I don't think anything, probably 150,000 miles and higher, probably. I don't think there's one such insurance.
Use the liability you have to carry.
I don't, I don't, we might have three pickups at a hundred, 150,000.
Has anybody contacted you on some dust control on Morrissey? This is for the last few weeks, probably.
There, it'll be right now, this will be...
Okay.
Have you did any of that granule mattoil yet?
Not yet, that was untreated, it's a couple of weeks.
I'm curious how that, this stuff, it works out.
I think we tried that spot, we took the asphalt out, 185.
That would be good.
Short spot, to try and see how it works.
I'd just say, keep us posted on that, and if, if it works, then maybe as, as done, maybe this costs here, I'm just, only digits once, I'm not trying to, residents, you know. If it works out good.
And we can use that, I mean, I don't, you know, still have to get it out, and I don't know what kind of luck we have, business supplier. So, help, help us with Canada, and you know, if that'd be something, I get that on or not. It's how true it is.
But I have...
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr..
Jamie, you, have you used any granite on any of these county roads? Granite, crushed granite? This guy looking at buying a mine over by Sundance, and he talked to me about it, and I said, I have no idea, but. Said it sure, I mean, I assume part of it's the binder in the material, but he said it sure makes the dust problem really, really diminish. And he thinks you can get it the same price as limestone, but I maybe haven't reached out to you. Worth visiting with him, even if you do a little patch in front of people's houses or something.
Is that, would that be like comparable to like the ballast the railroad uses?
He said it'd be very similar to that, just a little smaller.
I'd be, I'd be kinda cautious, if you're down there on the duty road, or the railroad put down there, then people just...
Flat tire.
Eat the tires. I mean, yeah, they'll take a brand tire, flatten it.
I wondered about that.
But theirs is a lot bigger too.
Yeah.
You've got the 35 material, it's standard, and it's just straight rock.
No, no, that's what I didn't know. And he told me it's the same price, I was kinda surprised.
It's just clean off, or wouldn't...
Yeah. Yeah, scared. But I might have to call you or something, you guys can visit.
Any other questions, Jim?
I just had a comment, had a call last week about dust control on our road, and I called your office and they got right on it. So, I appreciate it, and it shows that you listen and take care of it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Porter Little has schedule records, if you wanna come up.
The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Porter Little has schedule records, if you wanna come up.
I'm gonna say some smart like, my wife will like. She should, but I know better. So. I could talk to him sometime, didn't I? We have a few things going on. We've got, most of the things in our, in our plant. We've got one last skid put in, goes in today, and that's our main primary centrifuges and that sort of thing. We had NRC out and they did their inspection, so now we're just waiting for their, we got their verbal blusing, but we're waiting for their. Button paper working. We'll, we're gonna run our crusher today, kind of a full, full speed test, which we've done from, but not, not full. They crush a little bit of the material. So. My worry is that our hangup last time with NRC from that final event, but we'll be, we should be ready, if we could, to run the plant by the end of the month. And we will run it through its paces, but we won't, we'll be pushing product in there till we get that final blusing. We have, I have a. We're doing a shareholders reading on the 20th in Upton, and immediately after that, I don't know how many is there. Immediately after that, we're doing an open house. And certainly like to see your way there, I think the open house starts at 3:00. And. We'll have, our full board will be there. And. I'm kidding, I have lots.
Well, it just looks like good paper, good material.
Our full board will be there, so they'll be there for the open house. And then on the, the next day, on the 21st, we have a, our board will tour the bear lodge site. And then we have a D E G inspection at the bear lodge, signed up above Sundance on the 21st. Just about. That's about it, where we're at. We're, we're gonna be on pins and needles till we get that permit, because we're gonna be ready to, to fire up and, and go. And we're anxious to do that. So obviously, we wanna, we wanna test everything, you know, the, all of our controllers have been tested, the electronics, they're done. We're still doing a little piping, and there'll be a little electronic work, electrical work to do for that final component that's going in today. But that's, that's relatively minor compared to what the rest of the world will be doing. So we're, and where we're at, we're anxious to, flip the switch and get it going. So we're, and where we're at, we're anxious to, flip the switch and get it going, be able to tell you what's happening, but. So, any questions?
At that portion of county road, how's that holding up?
What's that?
The portion of that county road, it's been, it's holding up pretty well, actually.
We've been a little gravel put on it, and, but there's not, any hauling on that road's pretty much over. Because all our, all our skids are in and.
There's loads of construction.
Yeah, so the only, we'll, we'll have to move from on past the T there on around where we stockpiled our product, we'll have to move that down to the plant area, and, but that's, that'll be the extent of any major hauling left.
When you transport that, you doing it with a, like a belly round?
Yeah. Maybe in dumps, we'll see what, we have a contractor for that. The, people who put our skids together for us and build a lot of our components will be on site this week, and we have people from Sweden on site that built all the glass, the glassware, which is pretty extensive, I mean, that's, so about thirty feet high, and that big a round. When we unpacked all those cases to inspect them, there wasn't one broken, not one, nothing broken, it was. Pretty impressive, I think I met some of that. But it's all together and in place now. Anything else?
Any other questions?
We appreciate you coming in, Roger, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Well, that looks different.
What's that?
That looks different than it did a couple of months ago.
Oh, that looks different even from that picture, because it's, it's, there's a lot more stuff in there now, so. Alrighty, thank you.
You're up, Michael.
So the vicious dog, yeah, I talked with Brian and Sergeant Fields, Sheriff Cogburn and Sergeant Fields a couple of times about this. You can chime in if you want, since you're here, put you on the spot, but, yeah, I, I talked with them, they said they have been enforcing the statutes as they can. There's nothing they can really do unless there's a active crime occurring, such as the animal crossing the fence or coming at somebody viciously.
We gotta witness little portions of it, so we gotta be able to be there when that dog is out, it'd be the same thing with any ordinance type stuff, any type of crime stuff. So individuals who are having problems with a vicious dog, they need to report to us, because also we don't know if we're having an issue in certain areas. So every time we're, we've checked certain areas, we've gone through, we've had calls, we've not witnessed this dog out or a dog out, so we just need to have, make sure that people are contacting us, so we know where a problem.
And I do know that they do patrol out there, they do go by, they're just, they can't do anything unless something's happening in their presence.
It's, it's almost the same thing of, like a driving complaint, somebody speeding or something in, in certain area. We need to be in that area and catch that individual, I mean, we can talk to them afterwards, and that's sometimes helps. We can, we know where it is, we can talk to an individual or talk to that person and see if we can do something to help it. But we gotta kinda catch them out, by the way, you know.
They have cited folks, we, we made sure, and we looked back, there has been citations in the past, so it hasn't been ignored at all. And they're, they're being vigilant, and they're doing what they can within the bounds of the law, so.
Question for you, so what if it's a bite or something like that that you didn't witness, but they claim it's, I'm just curious.
Well, we'll go through the same portion of that, if it's a bite, they break in the scan, all that's portions of there's quarantines where that dog's gotta get taken into the vet, hospital portions of it, citations issued at that portion of it. A bite is a, is a, a visible and a, I don't know how to really explain it, but it's, it would be like somebody getting poached by something, so it's, it's, there's marks, there's stuff that you, there's evidence of that crime of that, that animal there, I mean, if the dog came out, barked or charged somebody and left, I mean, it's, plus if they've, I mean, it's, it's no different, I mean, we can cite off of, off of that portion of it, and we, we have. So it's, it helps if we have the history and the show repetitiveness of it, where it's a problem, if it's a one-off deal to, where it's not, and it sounds like this is not necessarily a one-off. So when we have cited in that area.
I'm just, I wanted you to question, what if the residents up there, I mean, video, have actual video of this happening, is that would, would that help their case, or?
It always helps, I mean, video always helps some sort of. Documentation, because of, that, that helps with the proof of portion on, like, charging portions on citations in, in court to, to be more than just a, well, no, the dog was a he said, she said type thing.
It's a tough situation, because folks should be able to feel safe just walking down the street, but there's requirements of the law and being able to cite it properly.
Yeah, so the biggest thing is, is that we need, just need to make sure that we know about it, so that people need to call in.
Any other questions from you? Thank you, Michael. Moving on to use control area petition from the William and Refinery, welcome guests, how are you?
Well, thank you.
I know you guys had a presentation at the lodge that the sheriffs attended or had the ability to attend, but if you could just kind of blow that and, get us up to date on what you guys are doing.
I guess, I guess introduce everybody here, I'm Mike Baldwin, I'm the manager of health safety and security department at the refinery.
I'm Shane Crawford, the environmental site manager at the refinery.
I'm Mike Volker, I'm an environmental, environmental engineer at, at the refinery.
I'm DJ Dawson, I'm their consultant, I've, I work for Wu Engineering, we're managing partner, and been working up here with these guys for like twenty-five years, or twenty-one years. How long I have, but Wu has been working with the refinery for like twenty-five, twenty-six years.
So DJ will give a short little recap of what we handled, but make sure if you can open it up for any questions. Okay.
So, in the, was it my setup, I think it was when we had a presentation over at the, the convention center, and we presented the application for this use control area. Use control area itself is just a planning and zoning document, it's, it doesn't really do anything with remediation, so it restricts the, the future use of this property. Our application that we have and that we presented is, is one that restricts the uses into perpetuity for heavy commercial and industrial uses moving forward. And this is really useful in protecting the public, because it allows the uses to be defined, and it keeps certain people and uses of the property in, into certain uses, and, and so that it protects those people from, in, in any kind of contamination that, that may have existed or. So, yeah. Got distracted, so, in, in reality, we want to have this, this use control area approved, and we use it to work with the DEQ, because Matt right here is with the DEQ, and it allows us to evaluate more options for cleanup of the property moving forward. And it allows the protective of, of public by not allowing future owners of this property to use it for an unintended use. So, is that, do you guys have any questions about it, because this is really only applying to zoning applications, it has nothing to do with contamination, so.
Any questions from these guys?
What kind of uses will be restricted?
The uses are restricted to just heavy commercial and industrial, really, so no residential, no health, healthcare centers, no hospitals. It's just schools, no schools, so it just allows for the continued use of the property for what it currently is, so.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on procedure to make sure it's done right, has it been published in the paper, I, I'm just asking to make sure that it's been done.
For, for, four weeks prior to this, and we've sent out adjacent landowner notices.
Because I don't have that here, so I was just asking, I want to see what it has to do with adjacent landowners, and I don't know when the county exactly received this, because there's a hundred and eighty day restriction that the county, and you guys can agree to extend that period, so. So the notice of the hearing was supposed to be today?
We got everything that we needed, I have all the documentation that.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
I have it all.
Okay. We just didn't want some.
I think it was submitted on July, I think that's what it's.
I think it was in the newspaper, flipping with.
Did I know it was supposed to be a hearing?
The, for here, yes.
Yeah, there's just supposed to be a hearing, alright, just making sure all that's.
I couldn't attend you guys' deal on me, so I had some of my kids in town, but I did have a pretty lengthy conversation with one of the DEQ folks, I believe she was in Landers, it's been several months, but I can't recall her name, but she gave me kind of a walkthrough of all this, and, and it sounds like it's a pretty standard deal, and they do it all the time, and it makes sense, I mean, get that land where it's not, not used for some of our kids who are digging in the dirt someday and whatever, mitigation. I think it's a good step forward.
Any other questions? We appreciate you coming in. Thank you guys.
I guess, I guess the only question, kind of procedural, you know, this is our first time too, as far as moving forward, then what's, what's the next step? You need anything more information from the refinery from us, or is it vote on it and move forward, is that, I guess, just trying to make sure we don't fall behind.
First publication has to happen, and you have to have a hearing on it, no, like, no sooner than thirty days after the first publication. And after the public hearing, the governing board, you guys shall vote on the creation of the use contractor, just wanna make sure that the notice of the hearing is before they.
Yes, I lost.
And you guys can, we can extend it beyond the one eighty days if it's been logged on that, and after the public hearing, if you can use the public hearing, but add, I guess, this is it. You've got a chance to talk, you can vote on it, I can tell on the statutes.
So we just need a motion to approve it, or, okay. It's a pleasure, the board.
I will abstain from any of this, we can't on that refinery employee, disclosing that.
I move to approve the use control area petition presented by the William and Refinery company.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
There is no tax implications, is there on any of this property that changes usage dedication, is there, I mean?
You know what I mean, will get Karen? Because I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Don't we wanna, let's see, it's done, but.
Question, and I'm not sure I'm gonna use the right term, so if, if the land is involved here, if it's ever sold for, for usage, will there still have to be EPA studies done on it by the people buying it?
It's a complicated question, but generally the answer would be yes. Our restrictions and agreements run with the property, so they're attached to the deed, so the new owner generally accepts those responsibilities.
Karen said there's no implications. I don't really need to interrupt Walter, it's like six, somebody's trying to get ahold of me, I think.
Okay.
Where is this property at that we're talking about here?
It is the West County parcel that is the main refinery.
Just, just where the refinery is at?
Yes, and it goes also on the other side of the creeks, but it's that, it's all that refinery property.
Tank batteries.
And, and it doesn't affect the neighboring properties around there.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one other question, you're saying this is perpetuity, I know in like real estate law, there's some, you know, there's like rules against that. Have you seen this been done, I'm not very familiar with this process, have you seen this been done in perpetuity before without any issues, or, or, I know you're new to this too, so.
We're, we're new to this, and, and Matt has worked on this, like, Matt, sorry, we didn't introduce Matt, but.
Yeah, Matt Blue calls with the William and Refinery, so other sites that have had this, I mean, frankly, it's kind of new, I mean, when this was established in around the year two thousand, we've only really had twenty-four years, and in complicated remediation project, projects, that's not an extremely long time, so the idea is eventually when these are cleaned up to an appropriate level, I think that there could be a reconsideration of that, but the idea is that while it is contaminated, it prevents like residential kind of stuff, or schools, paycares, so just to prevent people from potentially being exposed to any contamination there.
I have another question, so with, with this new zoning, say the refinery closes down, what, what then, does, does this do anything as far as your responsibility for cleanup? Or is it gonna leave us holding the bag because we let you rezone it, you know what I'm saying?
Right, well, this is just part of the process, but we, we use the UCA as part of the process of working with DEQ to address the contamination at the site. And part of the VRC process with two refineries, and this is called voluntary remediation program. And we are part of that program, working with, collaboratively with DEQ to clean up the site, and part of that is financial assurance, to make sure that the site is cleaned up. But that's not part of this UCA.
Is the standards for cleanup different if they zone it industrial, commercial as compared to residential?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, so how that works is the DEQ always looks at an unrestricted cleanup first and foremost. It doesn't matter if there's a UCA or not, if there is not a UCA in place, they are required to clean it up to residential standards. If there is a UCA in place, it allows us to consider the cleanup to a commercial or industrial level. If we feel that it is feasible to just clean it up to residential, we will still require that, but it gives us the option to do that. And generally for refineries, they are large, there's a lot of complications with those, that's when we generally go onto this UCA process and entertain the commercial or industrial.
So all of that area, if we go with this, all of that area where, I guess it's kind of the same question you have a little bit, will always be industrial, commercial? And that, and their responsibility will be to clean it up to industrial, commercial instead of residential?
Mostly, but again, if it is feasible to clean it up to residential standards, we still require. still require that regardless of the UCA or not. So the DEQ doesn't have any dog in this fight. We are willing to accept a industrial cleanup level as opposed to a residential if there is a UCA in place. But if it doesn't make sense, we're not going to do it.
Find feasible, if you would, please.
So, the way that our statute works, we are required to have sites do remediation work if there's an incremental chance of one in a million of someone getting cancer. And so for a resident, that's being onsite, I think it's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year for like 70 years. So obviously that's not really even possible, but we're very conservative in that. And so a commercial is, I think it's eight hours a day, five days a week for 25 years. So you're exposed to it a lot less. And so that's kind of how we look at your different exposures and try to figure out how much potential people have to be exposed to any kind of contamination.
So once this document is completed, it's then up to you, or I'm sorry, not you, but the DEQ and Wyoming Refinery then to proceed with that matter? And the community has no say at that juncture of what happens on the cleanup of that?
So, the way that that would work is we ask the volunteer to provide us a remedial alternative evaluation. So they go out and say, this is all the contamination we have, these are our different options for cleaning it up. When we agree on what the best path forward is, that goes out to public notice where the public has a chance to comment on it for, it's got to be in the newspaper for four weeks, and then they have another four weeks to provide any comments to us, which we then take into consideration before moving forward with remedial action.
The Senate President Bennett attendance, he is aligned and has a much better understanding of the governor's positions than any of the representatives who were there. He would have been there to represent that side, and the people of Weston County would have at least heard both sides. People, Wyoming politicians got to quit doing the Liz Cheney thing and deciding they're only going to go into rooms with people who agree with them. It doesn't play well in Wyoming, and I think that's what happened to Ogden. And that's why we finally had to do a story. We knew for a couple of years that this rift with him and the Republican Party was going on. It got to a point where I thought it was hurting the people. And so that's why we did the story.
And that's exactly who it was hurting. And it's the same with segueing into the other thing that we've wanted to talk about, other individuals not commenting on stories or providing information to the public.
It's got to be in the newspaper for four weeks, and then they have another four weeks to provide any comments to us, which we then take into consideration before moving forward with remedial action.
And what does the public have, what teeth do the public have with public comment besides just a comment period? I mean, if there's not a governing body sitting over that comment period to.
So if it, if there's enough concern, it can get elevated up to the Environmental Quality Council, which is one of our governing bodies for the DEQ.
What, is there a threshold where you guys measure that? Like if.
Um, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head if there is.
I just, I mean, I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I just, I imagine there's folks that live next or close that are going to have issues. I mean, I don't care what you do, you're going to have people that have issues with stuff. And I, I'm not interested in leaving the dirty Brownfield side either. I mean, but.
In any case of that, wouldn't you have, it would be contained if you would be waiting for the public comment to decide on what cleanup it is. It would be contained, and then those suggestions if there were in would be gone through, correct? You would always be contained, say on a spill containment?
Yeah, as long as the statutes provide a basis for it, we would definitely require cleanup. It's a little tricky just because there's a lot of other entities that could be involved, and it's not always a real simple situation like that, but I think what you said is certainly true.
Well, and if the contamination is affecting your neighbor, that is, that's not.
Different story, yeah.
That's a whole different story. And if it's migrating offsite to a neighboring property, that's, that's completely different than.
I think regardless of whether it is or it isn't, people are still going to take some issue with it. It's the problem that I foresee in the future. Was this advertised in the newspaper, this public hearing? And how long ago?
Four weeks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in, in favor of, of approving a use control area petition, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Where are you at, aye?
I have a say.
Oh, that's all right. My bad. Yep, I'm an aye. Motion passes.
I guess just one other final comment outside of this. You know, the refinery wanting to work with the community and stuff. We have a, next week, next what, Tuesday? It's called a public participation. They kind of discusses our remediation, what we've been doing to sites, the sampling, what we're looking at, and the results that we're seeing. And we encourage you, you know, if you have time, it's what, five to seven at our, our training center. And that's a good time to look at this information as well, what we're looking at, what we're seeing, and kind of where we're going, so.
Are you going to advertise that in the paper? Like.
It's already been advertised. It's, yeah, this should be in the fourth week this week.
Yeah, it's in the, I'll, I'll, I learned the paper, what's it called?
Or all the notices are.
Facetation and.
Yeah. Okay.
Legal notices.
So just want to throw that out there as well. Invite people to come and talk about it.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys coming in.
Well, thank you for your time.
Your hat.
Thank you.
Hey guys.
Do we need to take a recess?
Brandon is here.
I guess I'd like Michael to, I'd be interested in your.
Oh, did you already discuss it? Well, follow your agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, we had Sergeant Fields in here too, talking about this. They, nutshell is they, they are, they have been patrolling, they're doing what they can within the bounds of the law. I think the biggest issue is making sure that they're given notices every time it happens so they can follow up and do what they need to do. But they can't, it's hard for them to cite anybody appropriately if it's not like seen in their presence, or if they don't have like some recording of it or something. I know that might be difficult when you're dealing with the situation at hand, but I know they've been doing what they have to within the bounds of the law. It's just like, how did Sergeant Field, he compared it to like being.
Speeding?
Speeding, yeah. So you see somebody speeding, the officer has to observe it. You can't just say, hey, this guy was speeding earlier, so cite him. It's sort of something like that.
Okay. So there has been instances where we have called 911 and reported it, and they don't come out and do anything.
Okay.
So what's, what's your thoughts on that?
I don't know the ins and outs of that. I wish Sergeant Fields was there.
Are we supposed to videotape every time? I mean, that's kind of hard to do. I mean, just the other day, there was an elderly lady walking, and she got attacked by them.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know her, but I mean, like in that case, what do you, what do you want us to do?
When you say attacked, I'm sorry. When you say attacked, what do you mean attacked? Like, she was bit, she was blocked, she was.
I don't know if she was bit, but I know she was jumped on and, you know, trying to get the dogs off, things like that. I know one probably 20s resident was walking, and she was actually screaming, trying to get the dogs off of her. So, I don't know, what do you guys want us?
Do you know whether those were reported?
Those instances, no, I do not know. But I know we have reported. But we can start back up if that's what you want us to do, and just document.
Yeah, I think that would be.
From what Sergeant, from what our deputy said, is it has to be reported. They have to be able to see it or videotape it as much evidence can help. And if we don't know for sure that incident was reported, that could be why they didn't respond, but.
Right.
As much, I mean, it'd be just like, you know, my car got scratched. Okay, well, he scratched it. Well, this person, when you see him scratch it, will know, but I know they did it. It, it's not that we're questioning it. It's what he's saying is it has to be reported every time.
Right, and we, we can, I can definitely express that to everybody in the neighborhoods and whatnot, or if they're something, say, report it.
By no means are we condoning dogs that are doing it.
Right. I do have to note, and I feel like you guys can touch, it's going to be really hard to video.
Yeah.
I mean, like, who's going to, like, it's in the moment, it's in the action, you know, your main thing is your safety, and you're going to do what you can. Who's going to think to, hey, wait a minute, we've got to videotape this?
It was just an instance, if you could. I'm not saying while you're running away from a dog, you pull up before.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I mean, I get the documentation part, but I mean, I feel like all of us in that, in that region, in that area, we, we can all contest that it's happening. It's not like somebody's falsifying and saying that.
Do they, do these dogs, are they, do you know if they're biting somebody yet? Are they just charging and jumping up, or are they physically biting people?
I don't know that part.
The same dog?
Same dogs.
If they're charging, can somebody squirt them with some pepper spray legally?
They did that when they charged me the second time. The deputy sheriff sprayed them with pepper spray.
I wonder if you can, I don't know why you couldn't.
Well, and the other part of that is, shouldn't the person that's being charged or being attacked, as you were saying, they should be the ones that should be reporting?
And they have been, but nothing happens. I think we stopped because we figured it wasn't getting addressed, which is, but now that I'm hearing of other people who are just running in the neighborhood, you know, running the loop, getting attacked, it's like, okay, this is, this is wrong.
Right, okay. I mean, I, if that person's being attacked, and you don't know that this particular incident was reported.
Yeah, last week, I would have to ask.
I don't think it's reasonable to assume that if one's charging you, it has bad intentions.
Oh, absolutely.
And I would not hesitate to take some action. I mean, not lethal potentially, but something that would maybe teach the dog something. But, I mean, I don't know that, it's, Holden agrees with that sentiment, but.
It's, it's hard. I mean, if you feel like you're in danger of bodily injury or worse, can take appropriate reactions, right?
Right.
It's got, it's a tough judgment call.
You mentioned, did, you mentioned that a deputy, did he use pepper spray on this, this specific dog or group of dogs?
Correct.
So we've got documentation of that.
I don't know if it was documented.
Okay.
And I wanted to say, are you going to cite him?
If nothing else, we've got a verbal, maybe from a deputy.
Yep.
On that action.
Yeah.
Well, some dogs are charged up. I mean, I'm not saying these ones, because I don't know these dogs, but some will come up and, you know, they're wagging their tail, and they're jumping up for pet and all that. But, I mean, that's where that judgment call comes in. But I would be, I don't advise you something to get yourself in trouble, but you got obviously a right to protect yourself, and they do.
Right. I think the biggest concern is the fear of other people. Suddenly, maybe a kid riding their bike, you know, to go to a friend's house, something like that, like that's.
That one guy with the specs, he can get bitten.
Yeah, you gotta, I mean, heaven forbid, it takes a stinking kid getting an arm ripped off or something, that you finally, that's what's scary about it. And unfortunately, the statutes don't, I mean, it's not, we have no control over that until, I mean, they, that dog has to be caught doing something, or videoed doing something.
I would assume that the more reports that are made, and the more witnesses that we have, that something is going to get done about it. I, I know the sheriff's office doesn't ignore stuff, so we just got to be vigilant, you know?
How, how at large can a dog run? I mean, I, I know this whole thing started with this dog at large thing, but I mean, because they're in the county, there is no ordinance, right?
Right.
So there's no, no, I don't know that we have anything we can do about it.
But you have the state statute.
Yeah.
Which harassing, you know, dog harassing someone, which these dogs are harassing, attacking, you know, they might not be biting, but they're still attacking. That's, I don't, to me, that's justifiable.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering, on the state statute, is there anything there where those dogs need to be contained on the owner's property?
No, it's not just a, it's not a radio dog at large statute. It has to be.
They, you, has physically be attacked.
Well, they have to be aggressive, in a nutshell. Vicious dogs. I think the title of the statute is vicious dog. And then that goes to the problem with the dog at large stuff. In town, it's easier because they have the ordinance, right? But not, just regular dog at large, no, there's nothing.
But playing devil's advocate again, and not questioning, so I don't know these dogs at all, but if, if a neighbor sees a dog from a distance charging or what they feel is aggressive, and the person that is actually involved in the incident is not reporting it, or isn't, that isn't happening, then can it go off of somebody else's opinion of what's aggressive?
I mean, yeah, if somebody, if somebody sees it and they reported it, yeah, I'm sure a deputy will come out and take statements and make a determination of whether that person needs to be cited for their dog doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I, we want to help you any way we can. It's just, he said, as much information as possible is what they need, video. If, if the deputies show up, and these dogs come running across the fence into the road towards a deputy, I mean, can something be done there? Because they're actually coming as a deputy, that's.
Yeah, I mean, as Pearl said, one pepper spray.
Yeah, one pepper spray, and I was like, that's it?
I mean, from what I'm hearing, these dogs aren't particular of who they're going after.
No.
So if a deputy pulls up and they come after them, to me, that would be, right there is some grounds for something to be starting to get done.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, I'll definitely communicate to my neighbors and let them know anytime you've got to report it, and we'll just document it, and document whether it was reported and no action was taken in terms of no deputy came out or anything, and we'll present that.
Good start. Document.
Dogs that live outside of city limits. Correct. And they're not contained, not on the property of the owners, although they think it's contained, but they're not, they're just off. They're a little chicken wire. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, again. We appreciate it.
I'll be back, and we'll give you guys some updates on what has happened. And those letters had, where they actually, the neighbors actually cited it. They witnessed things, they, I mean, like, so, there's definitely some documentation. We'll just go back and document everything, and then come back in a month and let you guys know what was done and what wasn't done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
We have a few minutes, the third one's my attention. We could still approve the option of no looking for the hospital unless the board wants to wait for them to show up for that meeting, but.
It's something that's been done for the past, I think it started, oh, I don't know. Well, it says right in the resolution that they have here. Started in 2008, when they first requested to go from three mils to six mils, and it's been on the ballot, the general ballot, since then. But it has to be approved by the, because it has to go on then every four years after that, for the public to approve for that extra three mils. It's time for it to go back on the general ballot this year. The hospital was just going to come and ask, just visit with the board to say that they were going to pass that resolution for it to go on the ballot. That's all this resolution was, so they were just letting you guys know that. So, I guess you. That's all this resolution was, so they were just letting you guys know that, so I guess you guys can pass the resolution to allow it to be on the ballot. We're also gonna have our one percent on there again this year.
Is it time sensitive to get a print, the ballots printed yet or not?
It's not time. It's on the general.
It's for the November election, yeah.
It's pleasure of the board.
I guess I'd like to see what the hospital has.
I would agree with that.
It's gonna be brand of that size, we can.
Unless someone, anybody need a resource, we can do that.
Can I go to the board?
Good, Mario.
This first one is actually the library, about replacing the boiler pumps and the combustion chamber. They also found there two exhaust fans, which I don't think is the most important thing right now. Obviously, the pumps and the combustion chamber are to keep the boiler running through the winter. Brandon?
Yes, sir.
A year or so ago, this may be, maybe it wasn't that long ago, when we had them go in there and replace.
The volume air volumizer, or the variable air volumizers, and we replaced the pneumatic controls for digital.
Okay, so that air compressor is gone.
The compressor is gone, the old control unit's gone.
And all this stuff is, is updated stuff that's gonna.
That needs done. Like, when you were going through and replacing everything, they found a bad pump on a boiler. We've had a pump out before I even started working here for the whole building, and the other one's about on its last leg. So we're looking to replace them, both the whole building pumps and the single boiler pump. And then there's a controller for the combustion chamber for the boiler that doesn't match up with the new system, and there's, they don't make the part anymore to replace it, so they need to replace that combustion chamber.
Combustion chamber, they just need air.
Air intake to the.
The damper system.
Yeah, into the boiler.
Is that still working or is it?
No, it's not. So, like, last year it wasn't working. I didn't know.
It's just stuck open and basically when the boiler shuts down, cold air comes through it, right up chimney and you lose the lighter system.
Yes, sir.
So the, even though you said it's not the priority.
The exhaust fans aren't contracted.
Okay.
Those are to clear your bathroom air. When she, from what they looked at it, they said they probably haven't been working in ten or fifteen years, so I don't know that anybody can.
Do you think this is gonna be a, like a savings to the county and what's happening over there with that unit? I mean, are we losing hot air out the chimney?
As far as the combustion chamber?
Yeah, this.
It's to keep the boilers running properly, I mean.
It need, another, it needs done, right?
Yes. The pumps, the boiler, the boiler pumps, the two housing, or the main building pumps and the combustion chambers need done. The exhaust fans don't need done. That's more of a convenience or?
Well, without exhaust fans, though, you do get humidity and moisture and several other things that can cause damage to, in other areas.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Are the current exhaust fans working?
No, they're not working. No, from what, from Powder River told me it looks like that. I haven't been working in ten or fifteen.
So total, when it adds, it looks like twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars?
That's every debt at all.
Would, would you take the exhaust fan yard fifteen five?
Correct.
Go ahead, Carl. Yes, my thoughts on it is this is what those ARPA funds should be used for, and it's, if you're gonna fix it, why fix half of it? So I'll make a motion to accept Powder River Heating and Air Conditioning's bid to replace the damper, exhaust fan, boiler pump, and building pump. Whatever that total is.
Twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Twenty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to be paid for out of ARPA, why not?
I have a motion that's been properly seconded and any discussion?
We, we knew this was coming. It's not like it's something speaking up on us. On, lot of this pump replacement, are they doing much piping repairs? It just flanks to flanks.
It should just be flanks, flanks.
Flanks, not begin to pipe them much.
Shouldn't.
It's their big.
Yeah, if you walk into the boiler room, there are two building pumps sitting on the back wall here, and then the right boiler, it's pump itself is bad.
Well, and if that, as long as that pump's been bad, I'm sure you've been losing efficiency because it's not moving the water through the boiler like it needs to, and.
Any other discussion? All of those in favor of executing the proposal? Did you say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
We already had the approval on the elevator. I just wanted to let you know that he will be here this week to drain it, and then next Thursday and Friday, he has it scheduled to replace the pumping work.
Why were, go ahead.
You can finish first.
Oh, okay. Why were on that? I, I, I know this was caused somewhat by water damage.
Possibly.
Okay.
I, the water did take out the sensor for the fire system. I'm working on getting that replaced, but we couldn't find anything wrong in the cabinet, per se, water or not.
So what prevents this from happening again?
I've gotten it fixed.
Okay. It's, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing is, we talked about maybe presenting it to insurance, but then talking to Becky, what's our insurance deductible? You said like fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a lot.
And that's more than our bill for when the motor and the pump.
Well, and I'd like the board to consider, that seems awfully high for a deductible, but that's something we can visit later, but, and.
You started. We looked at some of the lower deductibles, and the premium is.
And the exact amount on it is thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
And that was the cheaper one?
Yes.
Have you started reaching out to any other elevator companies?
I reached out to Cone, and that's who I compared the pricing against, because they're actually the ones who own Montgomery.
And they're on agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't know what's going on with this fellow, but it sounds like he really not.
He's old. He's getting older.
Having health issues.
Possibly, yes. He's, it seems like he might.
Might wanna start cultivating that relationship.
Yeah, the Cone guy says he does have a mechanic in Gillette, but he told me, he goes, no, we'd be way higher than that, so. But yes, in the future, Cone will be the company to go through since they own the brand of elevator. We don't have any other independent elevator guys in the area. Dave Brady's looking for an apprentice. Anyone wants to go?
You said that they're gonna be working on that elevator. What's, do they have a projection of when it will be completed?
Completed next Thursday, right?
Got it.
That's what he told me.
We've had multiple complaints by calls and.
Yes.
And you got some definitions there, so completely understand.
Any other questions?
Are you gonna take that out of the ARPA fund?
Good, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
So, good morning, Michelle. We have someone coming for that, like, seven, ten forty-five.
Okay, well, we can, we can hit these other things first.
We have the historical preservation, this cabinet, separate by, so I'll call you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, old business, yeah, that's fine. I guess we'll just hit these things that we added to the old business election discussion, and then start that off.
I know we brought this up in a slight discussion earlier, but again, but understanding that we probably, we've started in on some of the testing maybe already of the computerized counting system. Still, for, I've got multiple constituents that have contacted me on a hand-counting ballot this year, and according to Chuck Gray, it's up to the discretion of the county commissioners to determine that. And I would have liked to continue that discussion.
Well, I think you, Chuck Gray referenced a statute. It's chapter eleven. Chapter eleven is section, article twenty-two. And one oh two says, "The board of county commissioners of each county may adopt for use either experimentally or currently in any election or in any and all polling pledges within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law." So according to statute, and according to what Chuck Gray says, the county commissioners are the one that authorize the use of machines or not.
What statute is that?
It's a.
Title eleven?
Title, title twenty-two.
Title.
Chapter eleven. One oh two, I believe.
I'd like to ask Michael's input on that. Were you familiar with that statute?
Yeah, I'm looking at it now. It says, "Any electronic voting system authorized by law." And then it looks like the next statute has the capacities required. I haven't had really a chance to dig through this, research any of it, so. At this point.
That's my, that's, this is the whole reason I moved it no more on the agenda. Like, all of a sudden, this is here in front of us, and, I mean, are, are we questioning if there's malfeasance in Weston County? Is that what we're doing this for? Or we, do we assume that these electronic machines are doing it incorrectly? Because from what I gathered, people sat and watched, and it was. I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know what road we're going down here, but. I guess.
Well, and I wasn't aware that Alan was coming and that the statute was being brought up, but I will say that I, I guess they don't understand why does it have to be because there's malfeasance, or why doesn't there even have to be a reason to, to do what the constituents, I mean, I'm not sure. The constituents that are requesting it, why is it that difficult to do?
So if you've got ten people in the county demanding that the ballots be hand-counted, would you just automatically do that?
No, no, I'm not saying that. So if I'm coming across that way, that's not what I'm saying, but I, I guess they don't understand the difficulty. And I'm not questioning what you're saying. I'm simply putting a question out there. Why is it, why does this have to be for any other reason but the people want it?
Well, I've got probably five hundred as, as many as you've got saying, don't use the machine, saying, use the machines, because a person hand-counting is, is more likely to make a mistake than the machine.
And I don't doubt that. I, I, human nature would say that that's gonna happen, but.
Right, and so, I'm, I've been doing it way before I was even a clerk. I was an election judge, and there has never, ever been a discrepancy with an election in Weston County, so, I mean, when you guys are saying that there's something wrong with the election, it's not with me, it's all of my election judges that is taking the brunt of it, so.
Well, first off, I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. What I'm saying is that the people, the question that you're presenting, I guess my thing is, is I'll use the race, the J.D. Williams and your race. How many votes did you win by? So to double-check that, why do it electronically or, and do a, a hand count? I guess I don't understand why it has to be somebody's to blame. I, I don't, that's the part where I'm lost. It's nobody's to blame. If somebody has a question, why can't they say, hey, I'd like to double-check this and have a hand count? I guess I don't understand why it's such a big deal.
There was an election, we went to a, a meeting where there was an election consultant talking up in Gillette just last week, and the machines that we are currently using, they don't have current virus protection. There's a lot of different discrepancies that, there's, they're problematic. And so it would, and Chuck Gray is, it's my understanding that he's, would support hand counting. So there's a lot of ways that I think hand counting would be, it would be beneficial to look into it.
I, I think you've got good points, but I, I see the, I mean, when you're talking ten thousand, thirty thousand, here we're at, what, six thousand plus, it's not as big a deal in some areas, but I guess the problem I have with the machine, if, if I have any problems with the machine, is we, you already said, if they don't mark it correctly, the machine gets it back. Why does that person vote not count if, just because the machine said it wasn't marked correctly? There's a lot of different things that I think go back and forth, so I don't, at least me, I'm not blaming anyone or putting anyone at fault, but if the constituents want it, why is it a big deal?
But the same thing. So you are going to know how that person wanted to vote. You're not going to know, and it's not up to you to decide how that person wanted to vote.
If Joe Smith is marked with an X instead of filled in and nobody else, nothing else is on the ballot, I'm gonna assume, yes, that Joe Smith wanted to be voted.
There's so many different ways that that can be. It can be an X, it can be barely marked. There has to be.
But in that case, their vote isn't counted.
Right, because there's, there's, there's a, you have to know how to mark up that ballot. You have to be able to follow directions if you're going to vote. You have to fill in the oval just like it says on your ballot, and if you don't do that, no, it's not counted. Just like you're only able to vote for someone, if you overvote, it's not counted.
Again, I'm not for or against it.
There's rules that you have to follow on your ballot.
But to say that every adult can confidently read and they shouldn't have a vote if they can't, well, that's, that's a problem.
So as far as constituents, I know that the Weston County Republican Party, our convention adopted a hand-counted paper ballot resolution. I know that the state GOP at their convention, state convention in April, adopted a hand-counted paper ballot. That's, the board is just five hundred people, okay? So, and then the machines are valuable. So, an instance, for mail-in or absentee ballots that are folded, often that fold can run right through the oval, and it can mark it as a vote. And if somebody, whether, and if they, and they filled in the oval, another oval, their vote will be wiped out. their vote will be wiped out. Also, there's a pen rest. If you simply rest your pen and it hits one of those oval, that'll count as a vote, even though you filled in another oval. And your vote will be discounted. You will have no vote. Or some people, for some reason, fill in an oval and then they'll write in a voter's name, the same name as a write-in vote. And they know, boy, they're, of course, that's an education thing for the voter. But these machines are hackable. I don't care. They have modems inside of them. This is a wireless internet society. They can be hacked. They have been hacked in front of us. Secretary of State, I think, of Wisconsin, in three minutes. So they are, and the, and the public doesn't trust them. And France has...
Well, I think that statement needs to go to, apparently, some of the public doesn't trust them.
Okay, some of the public doesn't trust them. I would say, I would say a large portion of the public doesn't trust them, but, okay, some of them. So France just had two national elections, two weeks apart, all hand-counted paper ballots. They were all hand-counted and done by midnight. We used to do that. We tried to get away from it for convenience. We thought that these machines would make it faster and quicker and safer, and they're not.
I guess for me, the question...
And there's a whole lot of information that I, you know, I could give you on another time, but I, you know...
I don't think we've seen any examples of that here. But at the same time, if the statute says that we have that right, we need to determine whether we do have that right. And if we don't have that right, to...
So just, so this isn't a judgment against the county clerk?
Right.
Or the judges? It's a judgment against the machines, okay? That's why we should not take the personality out of it.
So this is why things shouldn't be added to the agenda after the agenda's done, because the county attorney hasn't had time to look at it? You guys, this, that Chuck Gray's saying it's up to the county commissioners, that is not true. So until the county attorney can have time to look at it, till I can obviously go back and talk to my clerk, because this is totally absurd. You guys obviously planned this ahead of time or Alan wouldn't be here.
Uh, no, I had no idea Alan was gonna be here, so your assumption is incorrect.
Well, no, not you, but he wouldn't have known to be present for this discussion. So we obviously need time to come back and discuss this.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't, I don't...
So I know, I'm just saying that's why things should not be added to the agenda like this before you have time to discuss it or to prepare for it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Alan, please reference again the statute that you read, the section that you read out.
Title 22, Chapter 11, Section 102.
And you read, "The Board of County Commissioners of each county may adopt for use, either experimentally or permanently, in any election in any or all polling places within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law." Correct?
Correct.
So where in that statute does it say that now we're gonna make you hand-count the votes?
It, it doesn't. What, if you don't authorize it, then that's your...
Has it been authorized already? So if it's already been authorized, that's what we're using. So we would have to unauthorize it potentially, and then we have to go back to the Secretary of State, and we, we have to do all hand-counting until he reauthorizes a, a different form of electronic voting system that he deems appropriate, so. I mean, I think we're getting in the weeds here, but I, I agree with Becky that there should be some time taken to this discussion if that continues.
The Secretary of State has already authorized these machines that we're using for our elections. They have to be authorized by his office before we can use them for our election.
Again, I don't know that anyone's blaming anybody or accusing anybody, but I find it really strange that because it's a question that some individuals don't wanna answer, they wanna research, we have to make it so difficult. No one's accusing anybody of anything. The question is, is, is there an option to, to hand-vote in the county? Whether there is or isn't by statute, that, that's one we need time to actually research and get an opinion from the attorney, I would say. But there is no accusations that I'm aware of accusing anybody of any sort of foul play. You had something?
Alan, the question I, I mean, comment that wasn't on the agenda. I had talked to Commissioner Borton last week and asked about it, and he said he would try to get it on the, on the deal. So I just assumed he had it on the agenda.
He did.
And so, so I was, that's why I showed up here today.
And I have no problem with coming. I just was unaware that you were coming. He added it this morning, so that's why it was on there. So I'm fine with you here, and I appreciate your comments. I just, I don't know why we have to get so defensive about these questions.
Yeah, and that's my whole point. I don't think you need to be defensive. I think we just need to, we want to have accurate elections. I mean, that's a basis of our country, and I think that that's, I mean, that's what happened, you know, in a presidential election. So we wanna know that in our county, we're having great elections. So we'd like to come alongside of you and help you however we can to do that. And, and I think, you know, there's some valid points to the hand-counting that I think needs to be looked into.
One of my questions is, these voting machines never get, there's not access to the internet with them. You know, they are, they're self-contained. There's no modem in them, so, you know. My question is, how do they get hacked? You know, because they're not, they're... The other question, Becky, is, how many more judges are you gonna need to count ballots if this happens?
You wanna have the results triggered?
I, I would say there is a modem now. I know, I have a cousin up in Upton that's a judge, and they were having trouble with the machine. They called, called the clerk at that time, said, "We're having trouble with the machine." He said, "Well, we'll get a technician out there." Nobody showed up, and all of a sudden, the machine was fixed. And so it got fixed by the internet.
There's no way to connect to the internet, so...
I think that's an area of expertise that we really don't have. There has been accusations in the nation of hacking, but I don't know, I'm not gonna pretend to know how it happens, but I'd say that it's, there's ways of, maybe there is a way, I don't know. But I'm not suggesting, you know, for a minute that we've had issues here. I'm just suggesting that it should be based on what constituents want and not what's, what's better or convenient.
One other comment with the hand-counting. I mean, I went to a training for hand-counting down in Platte County. They demonstrated how it can be done. I mean, basically, you have four individuals at the table. One observing, one reading the ballot, and then two people marking it out. You go through a set number of ballots, like 50. Into that point in time, you check and see if your numbers are, all, all three match. If they don't, you go back through and redo the same count with a different color pen and see whether the error was. And if they're the same at the end of that one, you continue on. And it's a process that is self-checking and can be confirmed rather easily and is, goes fairly quickly if you're, once you get into the routine of reading the names and marking, marking the ballots.
I think at this point, if the board's okay with it, I'd like to table this discussion till the next meeting so we have an opportunity to research what, what the pros and the cons are per se. That way, it's a fair conversation. It's not short-term notice, but I, I think that, that's probably the smartest thing. If the board disagrees, please comment.
One, one comment I would have on that. I think that's totally legitimate deal. At the same time, for the county clerk to have people trained to do it, it's gonna take, take some time. I mean, it's not gonna take a huge amount of time because it isn't that hard. But it will take some time, and we're only less than 20 days out from the election. So if we postpone it to the next meeting, then we're basically past the primary. And we've decided that there will be no planning for it, so...
If the county clerk so chose to, it appears to me that she could choose to have a combination of, of ways to vote. There could be, if you don't want your vote going through a machine, then you put it in a ballot box that would, would be hand-counted, so...
Yeah, and I don't...
I, I don't necessarily feel like I have a problem with the machine. I'll aptly put mine in the machine.
Chair, I think if I understand right, this, basically, the statute does say, and I'm not sure, I can't reference the point, that either you hand-count or you use the machines. There's no, you can't give...
It says you can do a combination of both. Says, "The county clerk of each county using an electronic voting system shall determine whether paper ballots, ballot cards, or a combination of both will be used in each polling place." So appears to me that it's an option.
Could you...
2211104.
Thank you.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Yes?
If you had the option for the voters, that they could do either hand-write or the machines, wouldn't it be up to the voters of which option they wanted to do?
For me, I think we've filled in the question a couple of the statutes and what their interpretation of what we're able to do and what we're not able to do. So I think that would come from, I'd, I'd ask that question to the county attorney to, one, verify what, what is, you know, we've had misconceptions on statutes before, both by me and the rest of the board at one time. So I really would like to know what is the proper interpretation of those statutes.
Yeah, I'm gonna need time to look at it. I probably wanna touch base with the AG's office too, just to get their take on it.
I make a motion to table discussions till the next meeting on 24th, or whatever it is now.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion that's been properly seconded, is there any discussion?
I think, you know, tabling it puts it off, and it may not happen during the primary, but perhaps we can come up with an answer before the general election. It's not a win-win, but...
So I'm gonna ask the election judge here. If you get an election in, within the county that's within a certain number of votes, how is that checked? Is it just to kind of put people upon...
That, that race, if it falls, like, within a certain precinct, that is recounted again.
And is that done by electronic, or is it done, okay, so you just send...
It has to be done in the exact same way that it was done before.
And there's no, like, is there a percentage of, say it's, you know, 12 votes or five votes?
Um, three.
Okay. So within three votes, then it would...
Three percent.
Oh, three percent, huh? Okay. That answers my question.
And I've had to do several. Hope we have a lot of time, raise.
Quick question. When you've redone them, did the machines come back to the same number?
Hundred percent every time.
All right, so we have a motion to table this and a proper second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We'll table it till the next meeting. If you could get some clarity on that, Michael, we appreciate it.
I will.
And you want to call back to...
Not call, sure, we're done with.
Okay.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a Bootleggers Liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Where's yours, ma'am?
Thank you. Mrs. Petronik, we brought you here as part of the Historical Society. We need to do a little revamping in the courtroom as far as soundproofing. With the remodel, the high ceilings, it echoes drastically. Confidential hearings are not confidential because it, it echoes into the hood building. I just want to know what our guidelines would be as far as putting sound panels on the walls and possibly hanging them from the ceiling. There, my opinion would be to have it professionally done so that they know what they're doing. Versus me saying, "Hey, it looks good here," and it not working, and we have to go down and put it in a different place.
Well, as far as our board, we need to tell, this would not change the integrity of the building in any way, so it would be something that needs to be perfect. And we will go to matching it as best we can with the wall color, the wood. And, yeah, 'cause you don't wanna work in a ugly place today. Right, okay. So, no, we felt that any, would not change the integrity of that.
Perfect, thank you. And I just wanna transparently get the whole board to write what our guidelines would be.
Excellent, thank you.
You bet. With that being said, I have, Commissioner, I have reached out to SoundPro, who has contracted their commercial part of their business out to AVI Audio Video Integrators. I still have not received a call back. I spoke with a J.D. this morning, and some, either a Cody or Barry is supposed to get back to me to see if they will come and do a free consultation. I have looked on Amazon, but like I said, I don't feel that self-adhesive would work. I think that if it comes down in a court hearing, that's not gonna, that won't be good. So Amazon, they range from anywhere from $50, $55 up to $300, depending on the size. When we had the audio people from the Supreme Court come and do their installations, they said it would be best beneficial to have them hanging from the ceiling as well as on the back wall and under the sponsors on the, the small walls where it can fit. In speaking with Brandon, he feels also that a professional job would be beneficial to the courthouse, so it, it not only looks aesthetically pleasing, it's functional. Then he does have concerns if they do hang from the ceiling, how far down, so they don't interfere with the fire. Then he does have concerns if they do hang from the ceiling, how far down, so they don't interfere with the fire sprinklers. I can certainly, um, send an email to all of you when I do hear from AVI as to if they can come to do, hopefully, a free consultation. They would still be coming from Rapid, Rapid City.
Yeah, could you maybe email us, like, when they might be able to come, and if any of us could attend?
I'm sorry.
If any of us could attend, like, get a little walkthrough with them?
Absolutely.
Or whoever it is.
I'm sure there's not that many specialty companies that do this. Maybe there is, but.
Um, not that I have found. Uh, Sound Pro, uh, thank you, Commissioner Borden, was the one that was finally able to take the time to be able to reach out. And hopefully, they will get back to me as soon as possible, because there have been, um, more concerns voiced about the sound in the courtroom echoing.
Is it, is it all going to have our pocket, or is there some funds from the state on helping on this?
I can reach out to Judge Bush. I'm, I'm thinking, we have to provide, the county has to provide the space. I don't think that this is something the state will, will, um, be able to help with. I can see, um, I can also reach out to our court security committee as well to see if there's, Nate Goddard is the IT director.
Then, when this was all done, we were following their guidelines, how they wanted stuff done, and now they followed our guidelines, and now they're not happy with the end result, you know?
They are not happy, as the clerk of district court, I am not happy, um, constituents are not happy. I think the first one should be the constituents that are not happy with their hearings being broadcast when they are confidential. And there's not much we can do because of the echo. But we have to have the sound loud. Uh, sometimes the judge can't make it for a, uh, emergency hearing, which most of our emergency hearings are right then, and we need to get them set quick. So they will leave the hearing remotely.
I would wonder if there's any, probably not, any type of grant available for that? Maybe for historical, I don't know, but I'm just questioning if, if that's an option.
We can talk to Ken.
Just, just, I, I have no idea if it's even available, but it obviously needs to happen.
This probably should have been something that was addressed when the remodel happened. However, it wasn't. And I guess you learn as you go.
We appreciate you bringing her in, and now we, as soon as we, you'll let us know if we get a, a bid or a proposal, and we can address it at that time.
I mean, we can certainly go the Amazon route, as long as someone professional hangs them. Because, um, because the clerk's probably not best to be on that ladder.
Other issues, like, at the meeting, the key and all that, has that have been addressed to yourself?
Yes, yes, that much appreciated.
I think, um, it sounds like, especially if they'll do it free, but perhaps even if they won't do an evaluation free, you know, having this done professionally with a professional installation, probably a little bit of a warranty with that, you may, in the long run, save yourself some money by doing it correctly the first time and learn from our lessons. This already happened with the remodel.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Probably oughta reach out to the Fire Marshal too, and ask something about.
Was a decision made on where we were talking about putting the jury, the different room location? What we were talking about, where our emergency matter, like that was, has that ever decided, if you ever come to any?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, for circuit courts, this room possibly would be, been a, a, an option. District court, we call too many jurors. Um, sixty-five will not fit in here, plus deputies.
I did have a chance to talk to Judge Bush about this a little more following our last meeting or the meeting before. After we spitballed her, she thinks, really, this is the only viable room to avoid potential issues that would be good. She did, she has concerns about, I like Stanley's idea about the library, but she has concerns about transport, transporting, moving people from one building to another, because stuff could happen.
We did, when COVID, we had a jury travel through COVID, and, um, the city was, um, nice enough to allow us to use chambers, or not chambers, their courtroom, for picking our jury. However, again, we had people with disabilities that couldn't go back and forth, back and forth, and, and that, that happened. We can't stop the, okay, now the attorneys and the judge need to confer. They have to go back over there in the dead of winter, and then we had another one in a hundred degree weather. It, it, it's, it's, it's an option. I don't know how feasible it is for the members of our community.
And if they were in this room, wasn't the concern the mail machine and some, uh, security issues?
And if, if they see the defendant, if they, that, that can't happen.
Even if they're walking across the street and somebody makes a comment to them, then we have a problem.
It's, it could be detrimental to the case.
So we need to keep working on that, and that was one of their concerns, was the security of this room, so.
And backing up to the panels, they would need to also be in the jury room as well, because you can hear plain to state what's happening and when they're not supposed to be here.
When they do that estimate, though, you'll show them that room too, to kind of give us an idea of what we need to do. So we'll just wait to hear from you. We'll table it, but we'll wait until it's appropriate for you, what works for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thanks for coming by. I'm gonna go ahead and do the airport, if you wanna do the airport board discussion.
Yeah, so this has gotten a lot of discussion with airport board members. Um, a little confused, I guess, on to what they really are. A paragraph taken out of the Hundred Years of Wyoming stated on December fifth, nineteen fifty-four, "The city of Newcastle and County of Weston jointly appointed a committee of five to advise the council and commissioners on matters pertaining to the airport in Weston County." And it mentions those five, uh, committee members. Little concerning to me, I told, I told the individuals that I would bring it up at our meeting, because we'd recently taken action, um, on a matter pertaining to the members of the airport board, assuming that the individuals on that board or committee were definitely a board of trustees, according to the statute. Also, it was confused as our manager of the airport on to what these individuals actually are defined as affiliated with the airport.
And I followed up with that, and I'll, Mike, I'll let you talk a little bit about what you're, what you found.
Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time on this. The clerk had luck, helped us out a lot, too. Found out, went through the hit, the minutes from the fifties, piecing together as much as we could, and looked at property records. It looks like at first it was an advisory board, and at some point it became a board of trustees. I'm assuming, I haven't found the resolution yet, but I do know that there is a deed from the county to the board. So that means you can't, you wouldn't deed a property to yourself, right? So that means it's understood, and there has to be a separate entity for that board, meaning it would be a board of trustees. I just need to find that resolution.
Well, in, in that, getting all the money from the feds, the state, and everything that they have done, they could not be aboard. I mean.
Could not not?
Could not not be aboard, because I can guarantee whether it was, I mean, it's just, whether it was done by resolution, whether it was done in the minutes, and we're just not finding it, whether that part missed being in that part, or, I mean, it was done. There's no way you guys can be doing what you're doing without being aboard. I mean, I don't know, I guess, what they're wanting, whether.
I think it's probably just the, the moment, um, the moment it went from a, a committee of five advisory members to a board of trustees, because obviously, and I'm not disagreeing as far as what, uh, the receiving of monies and things of such, there was obviously a transitional period somewhere between now and nineteen fifty-four that, maybe it was a statewide thing? I don't know if it was statewide, or if it was only Weston County at that moment, or.
I would think you guys would have it in your records out there.
None of which we have found, and so it's a little, it's a little confusing on, on the members. So something that we, if we're going to act as such, I think we should have something to back that up to clearly define what the, the members are.
It looks like, if I'm remembering all the documents right, it happened sometime in the sixties, it looks like, when I can piece together.
To go back during, I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, I've got too much going on to look for. I mean, they're gonna have to look for it themselves. And I mean, if, if that document can't be found, are they wanting to dissolve as a board? What are they wanting to do?
Oh, no, I don't, I think it's just, uh, just unclear of the definition. I don't think there's, uh, action pursuing that, or just, uh, are we, are we an advisory committee?
No.
Um, are we a board of trustees? If we are, that's, they're, they're not disgracing whatever that definition is. We just want to know what that is.
They're an airport board.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think you're a board, whether or not, I mean, finding the, the information might be difficult when it was created, but, the process is being followed to appoint those positions as a board, so you are a board. I mean, we are appointing those positions as board members, so, and to me, you are a board.
Commissioner, I have a question. Um, one of the persons that brought this to our attention was our mayor, who said that we made the move, uh, without their consent, which, I don't know that, she said that we shouldn't have done that, which, we've been trying to figure out whether we had the right to do that, just for her standard, but what's your feeling on that?
Which move?
When we took him off the board or asked for his resignation, they said they helped originally appoint that board. It should have been a joint decision, in her opinion, which we questioned. We didn't go along with, I mean, that's the question she's bringing. So if you look at that article, it does say, "City of Newcastle and the county commissioners appointed originally." So I think we're trying to.
But when you look at the law, it says he cannot be on the board.
I totally, totally agree.
So I'm following the law, you know?
They wanted to know why we didn't include them. That was, that's the question. Nobody's questioning the statute.
I'll submit an apology email, Pam.
You guys are the ones that appoint the board members. The city council doesn't. It's a, it's a county board. They help fund, they reimburse you guys for half. It's not a city board. It's a county board. You guys appoint them, and then you guys pay all of the bills, and then Susie submits a voucher to them, and they reimburse you guys for half of some of the fees, not all, but some of them. But it's a county board.
The point that board made was, is they went to them with the plans, let's say, for the new hangers, and had to get some sort of approval in their mind from them. And, and that's where all this confusion, you know, we're just trying to get to the bottom of what is, what isn't. So is the city wanting to be part of appointing board members? She said the original board was appointed by them and us, so they, she questioned that, yes. That's probably why it got changed around at that point in time. It went from a committee, advisory committee, to a board, is so there was some clarity on who that was.
Which is why we were, went to Mike and said, "What is this?", so that we can clarify. I mean, thinking of the statutes, it says commissioner, the board of county commissioners appoints trustees, right? So it's a county board.
Yeah, we are the governing body of that board.
Yes. So it used to be advisory, the, the records are so unclear on this, that I can understand how people get, um, confused, but the course of conduct sure appears that it was changed to a board of trustees, I'm, I think, in the sixties. I just wish I could find a resolution confirming that somewhere.
What's, what's interesting, what comes out, may, in ten-five-two-oh-two, though, it says, "The municipal or county governing board, in their January meeting of each year, shall appoint a successor to the board member whose term shall expire during the year." So there may be a caveat that they can, I mean, they may also, if they want some input into it, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know why that language is put in there for the governing body, but.
Yeah, I just wanted a clarity of why this was coming up, because there's.
I mean, to, to me, the issue was entirely legal. Nothing to do with who the individual was, or, or we were trying to leave the city out of it. It was entirely a legal issue, and legally, he could not be on that board.
And I don't, I don't think that, uh, that that was the direction, or that is the intent of definition, um, ultimately. If, a pretty, pretty decent move, really, on a legal standpoint, if we're gonna be going from an advisory committee, which originally, um, originally, that's what it was. I agree, I agree with what Michael had mentioned as far as the, the order of business in which we are operating as a board of trustees by, by conduct and business. Although, I would think we have something somewhere, whether it was in the sixties or something, a resolution, minutes to something that was saying where this, this board is, this, these individuals are no longer an advisory committee from here out, are going to be a board of trustees, period, type thing. So, um, a little confusion with the individuals up here.
And I think the questions that came out were legit, too. If it was a board of trustees, there's your, there's your terms, which, if, they, they might have terms as an advisory board too, but they would have had it in their bylaws, as we were talking about, but they don't have any bylaws. So there was different issues that we were bringing up, just to try to figure out the right answer, if there is.
That's all I had on that topic.
Any other discussion on those? All right, we'll move on to salary tiers.
I just wanted, I didn't want this to go away. We, we've discussed it a couple times. And I think it's a fairly important thing that we're gonna have to work on. So I'm going to throw myself into class again, and encourage you to rethink about hiring an HR consultant, to set up a system for it. Check all our job descriptions, look at our salary tiers, if we're using them consistently, which could come up somewhere along the way, um, with someone feeling like they're maybe not being treated the same way as someone else. So that's a fairly important issue. But there's a lot of these small little issues, I feel like if we had someone set up a system for us, could get taken care of. It's, it's clearly, um, above what's our pay grades. We don't have the experience to look into this or the time. Along with that is, is training. Michael's asked and suggested that we do some training. We know we need to do some other kinds of training. Having someone get that started, set up a system, a tracking system, and get that going in the right direction. We can talk about it all we want, but we're never, we don't seem to be doing anything about it. And that's not doing us a favor as a board, and it's certainly not doing our employees any favors by just ignoring these problems and sweeping them under the rug every time they come up. they come up. I think the person that gave you that, that resume, I think she might still be interested in doing something, you know, she's a retired HR person, we could maybe talk to her and hire her on a consulting basis to set up a system, that would probably take a few months, and then perhaps she would fit our, our needs as far as working on an as-is basis for employee problems. You know, you've seen it at the hospital, you've certainly seen it here, that we're just bouncing around and we're, we're walking the fence on a lot of these things, that sooner or later, we're gonna have a big problem, and the, the training we need is to help everybody, to, to help everybody grow in their jobs, to feel like we, we think they're important, and we put faith in them, in their jobs, and also liability, and so is the salary tier. I mean, there's a lot of questions on the salary tier, if you work here, it gets very confusing, and everybody does it differently, and it's, it's one of those things that consistency is important, and there needs to be something in place, so, I know that Commissioner Todd doesn't like the idea of ARPA funds being used for salaries, but in this case, if we used a little bit, put some, say we put ten, fifteen thousand dollars into a line item, and get somebody working on this, this stuff, I think it would pay off enormously in the future.
Can I take a step back on, Michael, wasn't there some training that you had requested that I thought the clerk was gonna set up for us, or maybe she...
I already did, we're having our training this week.
Okay.
You've gotten it, I just think you all, you know.
Yeah, okay, what training was that?
It was supposed to be for the department heads, and it was with LGLP, and LGLP scheduled it, and we're having it this week.
Thank you for starting that.
And as far as the salary tier, I can send that to the employers' council, and they can work on that, we're paying them already for the whole year.
I would say employers' council, that wouldn't be my choice, because they're not in state and they...
The senate president, Ben, in attendance, he is aligned and has a much better understanding of the governors' positions than any of the representatives who were there, he would have been there to represent that side, and the people of Weston County would have at least heard both sides. People, Wyoming politicians gotta quit doing the Liz Cheney thing, and deciding they're only gonna go into rooms with people who agree with them, it doesn't play well in Wyoming, and I think that's what happened to Ogden, and that's why we finally had to do a story, we knew for a couple of years that this rift with him and the Republican Party was going on, it got to a point where I thought it was hurting the people, and so that's why we did the story.
And that's exactly who it was hurting, and it's the same with segueing into the other thing that we've wanted to talk about, other individuals not commenting on stories or providing information to the public.
I would say employers' council, that wouldn't be my choice, because they're not in state and they have, their situation coming out of Colorado would be quite different than here, I would think.
My question would be, is that going to be an additional charge from our, called subscription, because it's a different subject, it's not really a...
I could ask.
A personal matter, it's more of a, a general kind of a matter, but I, I would, I would wonder about that.
I could ask them, because there is a lot of things that's covered in our subscription.
Well, I don't want to throw this person under the bus, but talking to one of our department heads, one of the comments that was made is, is that, we gave a raise, I believe it was around fifteen percent, how long ago was our raises, and then we also added the insurance that we covered on top of it, which, I'm not sure the percentage, so I'm, I'm just gonna generalize, eight percent. Well, one point was made is, is that we have a, we seem to have a history of, you know, we have limited funds, and we're not giving raises regularly, or cost of living, so if, let's just say it was twenty percent increase, but if you spread that over five years from the next one, it's not really twenty percent, because there's no cost of living on top of it, you know, I would love to see us get to a point where we're generally saving on the budget portion, which I think all of us do, where there's a performance incentive for those cost of living, even if it's just by the products we purchase, from oil to gasoline to paper, and whatever the department saved, maybe that's a generalized, obviously, it had to be, it would have to be worked out, or a percentage of that goes back in to that department for saving that amount of money for the county, and that could be built right in as a cost of living, where we wouldn't have to come up with the money, just a suggestion on that one, but I agree with Eric, Commissioner, I, I agree that we have some holes that we need to fill on the, on the HR side, I just don't, the timing is a big thing, and maybe, maybe it is, I don't know what anybody else's opinion is, my opinion is it's definitely still needed. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi, what's this gal's name, I'm sorry, there?
Oh, will I give you?
I forget.
Marsha.
Can we invite Marsha in and just have a discussion with her? I mean, I, I'm not opposed to spending a little bit of money, if, if it's put to good use, now, hiring a full-time employee right now, I think is stretching things, but if, if we can have a discussion with her, and we see value in what she can offer, and if there's some, some things that she can help us tweak, kinda like you're recommending, it might be money well spent, I, I would like to have an opportunity to meet the person and discuss some of that stuff.
And that's what I'm saying, Commissioner, I'm, I'm not advocating for us to hire a full-time human resources person, but perhaps if we got someone in to consult and set up a solid base for a system, I think it would just help everybody be more consistent, and tracking training, you know, if there's sexual harassment training, that has to be tracked, and she could possibly set up a system where all the department heads could track their own training list, we get started, it could be that we just need the guidance to get, go in the right direction, and that we could maybe ask her to come in and just visit with this, she might have some ideas.
Yeah, I don't see any harm in that.
So do we wanna invite her to our next meeting, if that's possible?
If it's the board's pleasure, yeah, we can, we can contact her and see if that would be something.
Give everybody an opportunity to talk to her, to that, so we can do that. Will you give the information to Becky, so she can reach out?
Sure.
Anything else on the salary tiers? All right, fairgrounds, I guess I'm supposed to call, Francie? Francie, this is...
Hi.
Commissioner Taylor, you're on speakerphone, you asked us to give you a call.
Yeah.
Okay. The floor, floor's yours.
Okay, are we gonna, um, the reason why I'm calling is for the budget, are we allowed to get our budget back?
Uh, get your budget, you mean, you guys take over your funds, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting, because I called Paul on Wednesday, and he said it's doable, and we just gotta figure out how we're gonna do it.
That's the pleasure of the board, is there any discussion on this, or what do we wanna do here?
What do you wanna do, Becky, do you wanna keep messing with it, or do you wanna give them the ball, and let them roll with it, and see how it goes?
That's all to you guys.
I know, you're the one, you're the one to own of it.
That should be on two guys, and I think that if they move it, they need to take their employee back over, because, I mean, that's, that's how it was before, I mean, you guys didn't pay for their employee, that was part, and that was with the amount of money that they had, I mean, we shouldn't have to be responsible for that.
You mean, payroll's part of it?
Yes.
But, um, if we take it all the way over, I don't know if there's gonna be enough to do a whole year in that budget, on the full-time employee and the hard-time both. I don't know, I haven't figured, I, I haven't sat down and just figured it out yet, I'm working on it, but I'm not, I kinda gotta it all figured out.
Go ahead.
I'm, this is kind of a conundrum, it seems to me, right now, it's kind of been split in a weird way, that, that it was taken away from them, and, and there has been a lot of problems, and that needed to be done, we needed to get things straight, because there's been a lot of problems with past, with past people, so, it, it looks to me like it's, they're, they're trying to get it straight, and it's caused more problems in some ways, because they're caught, they're caught in the middle, Becky's trying to help them, they have these responsibilities over here, she's taking care of it, they're taking care of it, so there's a lot of miscommunication because of that, and a lot of problems with the bill paying because of that. I, I feel like, you know, it should be one way or the other, they should be like, get it all back, and let them have a chance to prove themselves at this point, they have all new members, they have a new manager, seems to be going well, or we take it all back, and they become just the fair board, and we are in charge of the property manager and everything that goes on except for the fair. I, I don't think we can do this back and forth, split in half, it's, it's causing too many problems, it's not fair to them, and it's, it's not fair to us.
I'd really like to prove us again.
Question for you, Francie, I know the, this topic's been brought up a couple times, and you knowing the history of some of the reasoning why the county did what they did on the checkbook side of your finances, could you explain to me what your main desire is in having it back?
So, my main desire is that we don't have to come and ask for you guys everything that we need, I would like to just be able to, okay, we can go and get this, and fix this, or come to you guys and get the bigger stuff done, is my desire is that we should be able to control our own finances as a board, because the manager did it in the past, but the board's gonna do it now.
It's, it's mainly been inconvenient to you guys as a board for maybe smaller things, smaller things that, that you guys have decided on needs to be done within your budget, and is there anything that hasn't been taken care of out at the fairgrounds with the structure that it is right now?
There's a lot of things, there's the building that needs to be fixed before the fire marshal or the, um, shuts it down, because that door needs to be fixed, and so does the roof, because the roof leaks in the kitchen, and I know, I'm trying to get, we have some estimates for that building, but it's just for caulking, and that's not gonna hold it, it's not, because I have leaks in my house, and we've tried to cock it, and it doesn't work. And, you know, there's, there's big repairs and maintenance out there, I mean, the beef barn needs to be upgraded, that we can maybe put some money into it, I mean, it's really hard for us to come and ask you guys, for me especially, I don't like to ask people for money.
I've got, if we turn this back over, do you want, now, would, have you got your QuickBooks all set up where you're back into that, doing it like it should be?
Yes, I'll accept payroll.
Okay.
And then, and payroll's online now, and I, and people say it's really a bad thing online.
Okay, and the other is, when you're proposing to do this, do you want, like, your money for your stall rentals and all that stuff, instead of coming into the general fund, to stay monthly in the county, in the fair board account?
That's what I would like, because then that way, we can put stuff to where it needs to be fixed, like there's hydrants all over that place that need to be replaced or repaired, and there's, and there's always a rock wall, too, and when I was kinda planning on that, I was gonna take Vera's idea on that, and see if we can get some donations and fix the rock wall, and I had a lady come to me, or call me, right before fair, she's gonna, she wants to do a challenge with the kids to donate money to the hydrants, when they sell their critters at the livestock sale, I mean, there's stuff out there that people wanna do, but they don't wanna give it back to the general fund.
Okay, if this transpires, would you guys be willing to, every month, give us a profit and loss report on where things are going out there?
Yeah.
That, that's something to be generated real easy in your QuickBooks, by just putting two dates in, and hitting generate report, it's very simple.
Yep, I, I looked at that part, yep.
You know, and... Are you gonna run your, would you run your, the fair checkbook that you have right now, would that be run through this QuickBooks, too, or is that gonna be kept on the side, where it's kind of in the back burner, and not be on the report?
Well, if they were, um, if we get our monies back, are we gonna have it in a different checking account, or is it gonna be in the same hall, in the same one?
I guess that would be up to the board, your board.
Well, it's what I would like to do, is do it separately, I would have the budget in one, and then the fair, just the fair account in one.
Would you set another, another... Well, I guess, in that, in your QuickBooks, you could set up a sub-account for fair, and then, and you could actually do a profit and loss on the fair, and your, the fairgrounds as two separate reports, but yet, you can generate them every month for us.
Yep, I could probably do that, I will probably do that, I will give you something every month.
Francie, I think there's still some disconnect on those buildings out there, like, you're discussing fixing them, that needs to be brought here, so we can take care of that, that's not gonna come out of your budget.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying that there's lots of repairs out there, that'd be little tiny, tiny things, that it would be easier to go and buy, like, a thing for a toilet, than to have to come up and ask you guys for money for, you know, a float for the toilets, or, you know, little, little piddly big stuff that need to be fixed out there.
Francie, I, I agree, we gotta be really careful, I agree with Commissioner Todd on that, I mean, there's some things, the rock wall, yeah, donations are great, if they're done getting to the fair the right way, but I, I don't think we should hold you accountable, nor the board, for past boards, but having said that, we would almost, at least from my feeling, I would like to see that P and L profit and loss each much, with, with the balances of the checking accounts, simply because we've seen it before, where, well, we were holding that money for this, and we didn't know you even had that money, understanding that even if you get that money and you have control of your budget, there may, we may have to reconcile some of that at the end of the year, not that we're gonna just take it all, but that was a problem that we had before, which I think Commissioner Wagner would agree, is, we, we gotta have complete transparency without the concern... We, we got to have complete transparency, uh, without the concern of, we, we don't want to hold you guys accountable for a past board, but you can't. You also can't say, well, the board in the past has just taken this all away. We have to have complete transparency and that's how we'll rebuild that relationship, um, by doing that.
That's why I want to, that's why I want to get with you, one, one or two of you guys and get those MOUs in place. You know, the memorandum of understanding between the two of us.
And that's something Michael would put together, I would think, but so that we have that backstop of, of issues arise again. Because honestly, I mean, I haven't been on the board as long as some of these guys have, but it's always been a problem, even the short time that I've been on the board. Um, and that's not your fault, I commend you guys on a great fair and the work that went into it. So I'm, I'm all for giving you the opportunity with the understanding that we cannot go on past principles. We have to be completely transparent and work together to make sure that, um, I know everybody doesn't want it to go, you said they don't want it to go to the general fund. But people have to understand that donations are not free, they have to be maintained. And the fairgrounds was donated in the benefit of the community, but there's still cost to keeping it, the fairgrounds that it is. And we have no choice but to look at that when we're looking at constituents' money and say, hey, this needs to be taken care of or it will be worth nothing.
Well, that's why I wanted to end the endowment fund setup and so we can take donations for those big items and. Use them towards that thing, that one thing. You know, like if somebody wants to, like these kids, that they can get that, um, challenge going next year. They're going to specify what they're going to want it to go for. And so I want that money to be able to be earmarked for that purpose. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, again, on building stuff though, I would caution you to use that in benefit of the community, those donations and not, I mean, yes, maybe some of it. I mean, but a roof or a rock wall or a building repair major, that needs to come through us so that we can, we can figure it out and get it taken care of, that shouldn't come out of your budget.
Well, I know that, I mean, but because what I'm seeing is the, the donations that come in, if there is any. Just not for fair or for the, what do people want to donate to the fairgrounds to fix something out there? How are you going to handle that? The endowment fund would be the best way to go. Because it's for a specific thing.
I guess I'm not on the endowment, I think we talked about it before, the friends of the fair seem to work pretty well. I would caution you not to overcomplicate with all these different side accounts because it might get you in trouble, but that's not telling you what to do, that's just a recommendation. What's the pledge of the board?
If you were to give it back, um, we're having a budget adjustment today, we did the resolution, put an additional 14,000 in the repair and maintenance. So the total amount that we would be giving back to them with the salaries is all or none. Hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-one cents. And we would just do a prepay, they would have to come and fill our dollar. Because that's what's left, because some of it's already gone.
And that number includes fair money, right? Not, yeah, okay, that's why, I just want to make sure they're having a, we need our 10,000 for fair.
With the 10,000 for next year's fair. Everything.
Hey Becky, can you, um, email me that, because I'm in Arizona right now, I'm helping my daughter move, but. Could you email me that, that budget adjustment and how much we have left, please?
Yeah, if, I vote once, everything's done.
Okay. And I will have the, um, estimates for the, the bigger stuff, you know, like the, the, um, the John Derry tractor and the Bobcat that we were talking about last meeting. When I get this, I get them all, I've got a couple of them, but not all of them.
I'd make a motion that would return the fairgrounds funding back to an amount of 129,812 dollars and 61 cents. They have left in their budget, it was approved. With caveat, at the second meeting in May, we have a very serious look at where they're at financially, to make sure they are on track. And in that motion, the, the money that they receive for. The income of the fairgrounds goes back into their budget, so we get a profit and loss statement every month that shows where they are.
Fair enough.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion, I'm not going to try to repeat it. Please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passed. There you go Francie.
Thank you so much, you guys, thanks for giving us a chance.
I'm not ready to get in there.
All right, I'll let you go Francie.
I'll go to a table.
Okay, thanks.
Becky will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
I want to make sure we have.
I advise. If we can make sure that MOU is just as clear, that would be very important as well.
Yeah, you can tell them.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I think we're done with the old business, let's move on to new business, which I don't think we have any. So we move on to public comment, is there any public comment?
Stanley Jashinsky, I just have a couple of points, one on, so, uh, the next meeting is August 22nd. And you're going to have hand count and paper ballots on agenda. If we were to bring somebody to testify, uh, to the, to the machines, um, and we gave proper notice to get them on the agenda, would that be acceptable?
And at least from my point of view, I have to ask the board about any point of view that, that we have that's legitimate point of view, I would say is welcome.
Um, I'm totally against as a, uh, constituent of using ARPA funds to fund any position. Or it's definitely a new position, um, you know my stance on ARPA funds, they have enslaved our youth in this country and, uh, although. And the economy is getting worse, so don't expect it to get better, it's getting much worse, it's heading into recession territory. Aliya Conda says it, the crash, uh, the other day, uh, represents that. We've had an inverted bond yield for a long time. We can't sell our bonds long-term, we can only sell them short-term, and when you don't sell the bonds long-term, that's a, that's a, that's a very bad situation, so. And I've never, I, well, I won't say ever, but. Most people that start off in government, part-time jobs end up in full-time jobs, so I, I'm against using, uh, if you want to fund this part-time. Come up with it from the taxpayer's money and not ARPA money, because then you're going to, because once the job's established, you're going to keep looking for the taxpayer's money anyway. And if you can't find it now, you won't find it later.
Thank you Stanley. Any other public comment? Commissioner comment? Start with you Nate. Eric?
The, uh, the reseal project and restriping was completed last weekend out there, for you guys might have noticed, it's pretty black and the paint's bright on it now, so. Just a little update on, on the completion, that's something we got going on.
Uh, for me, I just, I want to say, uh, I appreciate the attorney's office reaching out. I was a little confused while Becky was gone and I have no problem saying it, when we were doing budget. My impression of the budget was we were going to require our department heads to stay strictly within their budget. So, um, my apologies for being paranoid about the budget, but that's the message that I heard at budget time, I'm not sure what you guys heard. We didn't have the money to spend, so I appreciate Michael reaching out, we got it resolved. It, it's concerning that at some point we're going to have to reconcile that and we're not within budget at the end of the year, and we'll fix it. But, um, my, my goal is, is at the end of the year to be able to say, we completely stayed in, but within budget, even had some left over. Instead of chasing it, which is maybe a high expectation, but that's one that I, I do for my own businesses and I think that's a, a good way to look at it. So thank you for coming to me about that, that was a concern. If I misunderstood the budget, may I, please tell me, because that's what I understood it was. And that's why I suggested I don't want to put something in front of the board or them not be aware of something, you know, especially if I'm not sure. All right.
You.
Me, onto vouchers.
Put her tablet in there, Becky.
Um, I will show you.
And I'm going to stop the record, or the broadcast now.